For twenty twenty five at six P M. We do have a call in the present. First on the agenda, open with prayer and pledge allegiance.
Father, we thank you for the opportunity to come to here and to conduct business for this city. We ask you for guidance. We ask you for your wisdom. We ask you to help us in making whatever decisions that will benefit this town and uphold everything that we're trying to accomplish here. We love you and thank you in Jesus's name.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
First on the agenda, discussing possibly act upon purchasing and fixing the culvert on the South First Street, Chris?
I got my report back from the engineers and one option we have is one million, two hundred and three thousand, seven hundred and twenty-two dollars and eighty-one cents.
That's not an option.
And the second one is seven hundred and ninety-one thousand, three hundred and sixty-two forty-two. And I have reached out to, I know, hey, talk to, or he. You break it out to the engineers for that thought or?
Tried to.
I'll send them an email. See if maybe they can give us some engineering assistance. That's where we're at.
That's the projected total cost?
Yes.
Of the project for both of them, which neither one of them looked forward? So?
That's a good idea, of course.
I think that big culvert took pretty good. The one we were gonna do, right now?
Fourteen by fourteen concrete box. I can look at concrete boxes.
We had some processes allowed you from that concrete. Allow you.
Y'all want me to look at the concrete boxes? I'll get.
Eddie, I'm sure you know where our, our, our park up there, there is. Park industries.
What do we expect those to run? Any ideas?
I don't have much. Dimensions?
When we're looking at fourteen foot by fourteen foot, I don't see.
All right, it don't be longer than that.
And that's, that's a double barrel.
Um, we start at two hundred and seventy-seven feet.
Yeah.
It's long.
Two hundred and twenty-seven point seventy-eight, seven feet. About fourteen hundred dollars a foot. That's just way. There's no way I'm gonna ever, ever sign off on that.
So the engineering part of it, so you think you could?
It seems like an awful high price for for gold, for box over.
Those things are expensive.
Very expensive.
Those safety ends up going on Rocky Falls route, seven or nine, six thousand a piece.
So they're, they're proposing with the engineered project of two hundred and seventy-seven linear feet. So that's what's killing us, you know? The culvert was gonna be how long?
Well, I mean, there's lots of, lots of, lots of pork put in this thing too. We got twenty-one thousand dollars worth of traffic control. I don't think we need twenty-one thousand dollars of traffic control. We got some cones.
Yep.
Right.
You know, that just ridiculous.
Fifty-four signs.
Y'all wanna go back looking at the culvert with not, not engineer? Unless we can find a grant somewhere to replace the one one behind us?
We sure can board them.
We sure can do this.
What do you think, Andy? That's your?
I work in a couple of my forties.
Yeah.
Now, what I've learned is they need to be separated as much as their, the diameter. So they'll need to be eight feet apart. So you have to open a fat creek. Twenty-four feet.
Don't they put a, a head wall in there? I mean, that would, that would create a dam, wouldn't it?
Well, if you put them side by side, they'll wash out. It's just what I've learned. If you put them like that, the water will channel.
That's the way they work.
It will, it will channel it.
That's the way they were putting them before.
Yep. It will channel it out and and wash them out. And so we put something down to twenty-three hundred weight down by limestone county line, and that's how we had to do it, with an excavator. And you, you set one and backfill it, and then you dig the cradle for the next one and set it in there.
What size horns were in there before? Do you remember?
I would say eight.
They were eight?
Yeah. There's just one eight?
Yep.
And now we got, was that a four?
Yes, whatever they put in there to, to.
It's just temporary to, to keep the road, keep the road open.
It's still going through that bottom one. It's, it's collapsed to some extent, you know, when it rains. But when we get another one of those big rains, it's gone again.
Gonna take it out, yeah.
So we're gonna get a price on two eight by forties? What do y'all think? I don't think we have much choice.
We don't, this isn't, this isn't even an option.
So we get a price table up till next month?
Yep.
Okay, next on the agenda, discussing possibly act upon approving the survey from Hearn Survey Company. We just discovered today that the lots, the way the lots were laid out, that Dixon?
Where Dixon? This is Mopet.
Mopet?
Mopet.
Okay. That, Smopet's house is fifteen foot into the lot next to hers that she owns, so I'd like to table this as well to, to see if we can get the guys back out there and see if we can't fix this where her house is on her property. Do y'all have any old paperwork? That's on the survey?
It's all dark.
All right, all right. If, maybe we can get, uh, see what all you have there, and maybe we can pass it on to the surveyors, and we can get that fixed, so your house is on your lot. We didn't realize that till today, and thank y'all for coming up here today, letting us know. We thought that, are you on both those lots, or I did anyway, so?
Well, I own, my daughter owns eighteen. My house sits on nineteen, and I own twenty and twenty-one.
Okay. All right, so we're, we're gonna table that till we can get with them and see if we can't get that straightened up, okay? That works together. And, um, once we come up with the, figure out how we're gonna do it, we'll get back to you guys. You have a real number, don't you?
I have a real number. I probably hurt getting with Victoria this week.
You happen to know Thomas Mopet?
No, I don't think so. Where was he from? My hair?
Oh, no, he was from Dawson. I remember him well.
Oh, no.
He, he was a senior when I was a freshman, and he was a monster running back. He wasn't very big, but he just you'd get a headache when he hits you. Anybody that ever played against him, remember him.
Oh, okay.
All right, next on the agenda, discussing possibly act upon making Amber the city secretary of the check signer at the bank and to get the water sewer and general debit cards. Obviously, that's the move that, the move we need to make so he can continue to plug in.
I made a motion that, uh, Amber is a check signer at the bank.
Second, second.
Third, third.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carried. All right, next on the agenda, update on the Veracol College Adult Education Night on December second, twenty twenty-five, Amber?
Um, so, Amber's not here. They have reached back out to us. They're gonna do it on December second, around five to eight. They don't need us to do anything but provide the place, so it's gonna be at the fire station.
And they're doing, they're doing all the advertising?
I think so.
Okay. So what that is, guys, if y'all don't know, is for people, for GEDs or whatever other kind of education you want, they're reaching out to us to have a, a meeting to, to talk to people. So if you know anybody, let them know. Okay, next on the agenda, discussing possibly act upon proving tires for the backhoe, fourteen hundred and eighty-five dollars, Chris?
Yes, I need new tires for the backhoe. I've got one other quote, but it was like sixteen something. I'm trying. That's one of my tires that currently.
Yeah, five years left on those tires.
Yeah.
You're supposed to spend a little bit.
It's about two years worth. Oh, there's a better picture. That's knocking down a four years.
That is about like the tires on these dudes, uh, running in the hundreds of that.
Looks like they're big, cause I haven't talked to them.
Is that installed?
Yes, they come out, they install them.
Is that backhoe, is it four gauge?
Yeah.
This is the John Deere, or no, this is the big, the backhoe. So this is all four?
Or just two bags?
Just two bags.
I had an emergency six months ago, and I had two front tires that were half of price.
Yep.
Okay.
The front tire is good, other than the back tires, it's been a couple years since I done that.
Make a motion to approve the purchase of two back tires for the backhoe.
Second, third. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carried. All right, next on the agenda, discussing possibly act upon trusted group land purchasing company. Number six. Um, to read that, these people are interested in buying a piece of our property. So, eight one oh two seven oh J Fullerton Head Track, track eighty-eight, twenty acres, all right away, left the.
That's the, right away behind the fire station. We had this before, and we just brought it to y'all to see though.
Yeah, we all set our property. Somebody motion, if y'all agree.
I'm not in favor of that.
I'm making a motion, we do not sell our property, our property.
All right. Second, third. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carried. All right, next on the agenda, discussing possibly act upon approving the twenty twenty-four audit. Read the book. You wanna read the whole thing, I'll write it up here tomorrow. Uh, we, you got, uh, got some packets early and reviewed it. Um, we've been over this thing a hundred times. Marks. Where everything is up to date, it's spread away finally. Uh, move to approve the twenty twenty-four audit. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Here, vote.
I know, I have no opposition.
Motion carried. Next on the agenda, discussing possibly act upon voting for directors for LeBarre County Appraisal District. We get six votes, number eight on your packet. We have a total of six votes. The deadline, December fifteenth, so I figured we'd get it together on the fourteenth. I'm just kidding. But, uh, do y'all recognize any of these things, Matthew, for the board of directors?
Nope.
So, fifth and eighth is what?
I do not show any of these, so.
It's on Monday. We're, we're meeting again on the night. So if y'all wanna do some research, we can bring our, uh, bring this back next meeting and, uh, go through it then and see who that, who's handling it. All right.
Sounds good.
A little homework for everybody. All right, next on the agenda, discussing possibly act upon approving the RV ordinance, Matthew?
Yeah. Um, so, like I presented to y'all at the last meeting, I think we're in a position where we're gonna need to do something, probably sooner or later. I think with the data center moving in down the road, uh, there's gonna be a lot of demand for people to open up private lots to store, um, traveling contractors, RVs. We're seeing it at Adley right now. In fact, driving through, I don't know if y'all have seen the One Oak facility going up out here with me. There is a half acre lot, has about twelve RVs on it. So we have nothing on the books. I think in order to prevent that from happening, we need to get something written down. So I took a stab at it, presented that to y'all. If you had any thoughts, I'm, I'm all ears, but I mean, I drove, I drove around. We've got two RVs down near on Main Street that are just parked where that building burned down. And no evidence that anything's gonna get cleaned up. It's just a parking lot for RVs. I think that's the problem.
Well, I agree with that a hundred percent, but there's a part of restriction on people living in those. I personally know of, of, of few that's, uh, living in RVs, cause they can't afford any other housing, because even mobile homes are too expensive for them. And, uh, unless it was somehow, they were grandfathered in or something.
Yeah.
You know, I'd, I'd be hard pressed to do both, although, you know, I'm torn between the both.
I'm, I'm with you, yeah.
I'm totally against, uh, RV parks going on, they have land around here, that should we have no control over, cause we don't have an ordinance. But, you know, like I said, those that already exist and they are gonna do again, should be some kind of exemption or grandfathered in.
Yeah. Yeah, so I know there are, um, some, uh, vets that live in RVs in Dawson, and the last thing I wanna do is, is make their life any more difficult than it already has been. So in cases like that, a hundred percent, um, I think we should entertain, uh, some exemptions.
I agree. I mean, we have to do something for it, if it comes our way ahead or something.
Well, anything, no matter what, if, if, I mean, it was pretty much everything that's existing would have to be grandfathered. There's no, I don't see anywhere around that, so that's not an issue.
I think there are ways that you can, you can word, word ordinance to sound like codes. So in order to keep an RV in compliant condition, it needs to meet certain requirements. So you can say, all RVs are grandfathered in, um, provided that a permanent structure be built around them to protect, protect them from the elements. Something to that effect, um, I think would be retroactive, so.
I also think the number of RVs is very important, like you said.
Oh, absolutely, yeah.
Yeah, and maybe you're allowed to have one connected on your property, but not two connected as a residence.
Right.
I think we need to fine tune it. I think you're only right on that.
On RV parks.
Just give them any of that, of course.
So the, the RVs in question that you're talking about actually aren't my neighbors.
Okay.
They're people that do live there.
Okay.
Um, unfortunately, it is very junked up. I think that something needs to be done about the cleanliness. I think we do already have city ordinances against that, but no one's enforcing it. So if there's any way that, if y'all are wanting to approve more campers, RVs to move in, um, even with stipulations, that's gonna have to be well thought out.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, and speaking of campers, RVs, is there anyone that can do something about what's living next to me? Um, anything. I know that they don't have a lot of money, so I think it probably wouldn't suffice.
Right.
Um, I know that Lions Club actually did try to reach out and help them. I'm not sure what fell through with that, um, but it's actually causing a problem, not just in us, so keep that in mind.
Thank you.
What's the, what's the address?
Uh, my address is four oh seven South Main, and it's literally next door to me, across the way.
It's the sample.
Yeah.
From where their house collapsed down here.
Yes.
Hey, before they moved those RVs in, right after their house burned down, just so y'all know this, they came to me to buy a new single wide. I even paid down payment money, come to the city office to get a permit to move it in, and it was denied. That's why the RVs are there. That was in May of twenty-four.
That's, that's.
You weren't here. No, it wasn't you.
That's the other thing is, the city ordinance won't allow them to move a single wide trailer in there.
But it was a single wide sitting there, so it should have been grandfathered in, yes.
The original structure.
The original structure was, but once it burned down.
That's been, that wasn't told by the police department. That was told by former city secretary. So, that's, that's the reason why they got the campers there now.
So do you?
That's because it was grandfathered in. I mean, I know there's a camper that's up here.
Now that I'm back, I'll be in there and start getting a little bit.
There's a camper that's up here behind where the old, um, truck stop used to be. That place is well kept. It's nice. If like, if we can keep something like that, I mean, it wouldn't be that big of an issue. But, I mean, they're just moving in everywhere.
Yeah, we have ordinances in place for, for cleanliness, so we'll, we've had a we've had a little lax in our, uh, police department as far as patrolling, because we haven't had many officers. But we're getting back on track, so.
Yes, sir.
Get those guys and, uh, people.
Yes, sir.
Uh, just an observation, but it seems to me that some of the travel trailers around town that I'm seeing, not many, but a few. And I have mixed feelings about it too. But I'm seeing one where it looks like people moved in fairly new travel trailer, and they're sitting, it's next to a house that they're remodeling. Which is a good thing. So, and, and they did it right. I mean, this thing looks nice. Metal stair all the way around it, gravel underneath it. It looks really nice, so. Whatever you do, we don't wanna discourage that, people coming in, setting up a travel trailer next to it to live out of while they get this house remodeled.
Correct. Right, that's what I'm saying, like, one, one hooked up and you're.
Temporary housing.
Yep, temporary.
Right, and so you remember in the ordinance that was passed out, that was one of the provisions.
Yeah.
So, um, if I need to have a final draft?
Yeah, let's do it, y'all.
Uh, next meeting, that's fine.
Okay, let's do that. Let's table that.
I sure don't wanna be like Robinson. I mean, a friend of mine lived in Robinson, and his house burned down two days before Christmas. And the city of Robinson would not let him put an RV out there while they rebuilt.
Yeah, that's ridiculous.
And so he ended up moving completely out. He'd been a resident of that town for fifteen, twenty years, paying those exorbitant property taxes and the whole bit. And yet it was like, well, you're out. He said, okay?
Most cities are like that.
I just, I just don't want us to be like that.
Okay, next on the agenda, discussing possibly act on, upon creating, approving assigned ordinance?
Well, if you'll notice, there's a bunch that I have my name by. And this is just something that we.
I did notice that.
It's something that, since we're in this ordinance, but these have been brought up in the past and have been tabled and.
What, what, what is that?
The main reason is this, this was trying to get passed years ago when I was on council. Main thing is, um, we, we don't want someone to come up on the highway and put a billboard advertising DWs up there on, uh, forty-five. It's county land in our city.
Oh, sign ordinance, okay.
So, um.
You mean like a billboard type sign?
A billboard type sign, um. Commercial properties that are building signs now that are starting, signs like the fire station and the Baptist church, the message church, they're low to the ground, they're a certain size. They're not, um, really large and standing out. Uh, something we need to look at. And from, I'm just gonna go on to the next, um, while we're doing all this, working on these ordinance, uh, burnout ordinance. Just, um, we've got a number of properties here in town that's just sitting now that have got to be cleaned up. These people that have these properties and just walking off and leaving them after they're burned out, something we, we've got to do something about it. We can't just keep that going.
Agreed.
That's just something we've got to do, whether we take it ourselves, auction it off, clean it, and auction it off, sell properties, whatever we got to do. Give them the option to clean it off, of course. But, um.
Are you talking about like a fire burned out, or just?
Yeah, we're gonna do these houses that are burned out and then they're sitting now. And we got lots that are cleaned off. And of course, the animal ordinance is still going on, and then the government ordinance is, Chief Secord got mentioned here as well, so. It just needs, needs attention. We need to get them on our agenda, we need to get them on, get them in place and, and start acting on these things. We, I noticed that we, um, put a, a shop up on the highway. And, um, the plan was both to be brought to the council, and I never saw them. And all of a sudden, which our shop there appeared. And that, and that particular piece of property don't have, I don't see anything in place to to support a veneer, a masonry veneer, a, 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 a lane coat of any kind, like we asked for them to do, a truck stop.
Truck stop. Truck stop. That, he came in here, he presented plans, y'all told him, y'all wanted masonry halfway up, y'all wanted uh, certified electrician, certified plumbers and all that.
We wanted his, uh, we wanted to see his plan, we wanted to improve of what he wanted to do, and of course, that's, you know, which guy.
Well, he brought, he brought some plans, they were not, but he agreed, we gave us the plan of sketch of what he was gonna do, and then he did promise to put the the brick veneer on the front, so we'll have to hit him up, our code and force him off to have to be.
It's definitely got to be looked at. I mean, we've, we've also put that before some other people that have probably changed their mind because of it.
Now, do we have, we have an ordinance on that masonry around the front of it? It's gonna be kinda hard to enforce it if we don't have the ordinance for it. So is that what you want to do?
Well, we, but we, um, we told him that the council would, would want that in, and that's in the minutes. That we did want him to put a certain amount of masonry on front of the building.
So we went back up to the sign ordinance, so we need to try to, uh.
Yeah, I mean, it's just some, it's just, it's just ordinances that have been floating that we need to start on. I mean.
I don't remember a sign ordinance ever being talked about, but.
Yeah, uh, it's, it's been on and off for twenty-five, thirty years. And it's something, I don't know, we didn't need to look at. Um, we've got this, I don't know what's going on with the school sign yet.
Well, that individual is no longer on the school board, so it's kinda died off. I can get with the hearing, and y'all are still interested in it. I still ain't found information y'all wanted on the electrical part. I keep getting a little bit of this, a little bit of that. It ain't gonna cost that much, but I can't get nothing exact, but feel like for me to look into again, I'll reach out to Aaron and see if the school even knows anything about it, uh, but I can reach out to, you know. If we can get the benefit from that sign to offset the, whatever the electrical cost is, but I mean, that, there's a lot of traffic flows up and down there, we could, you know, put advertisement for whatever, you know, the city's got coming up. Or, I, I think we could use it to provide an advantage, but.
Use it for something besides buzzer strips, I don't know, that's what's been happening right now.
You know, the. So I'll check on the school sign, and we can ever get together and research these other ordinance if y'all like.
But I just, I just had those, and I was, I just had her, had her put those on, on the agenda so we can, um, bring them out and give them, and give them atten, get some attention on them.
So y'all wanna dig up on the sign ordinance, I don't think we have one, uh, for the next meeting? And then, um, do we want to create a masonry ordinance to come out on buildings up on the highway? I mean, I think we're gonna have to draw that up as well, can't just say.
Yeah, right.
So, I guess.
Well, I did what Chief Secord was talking about earlier, when he addressed it, you gotta enjoy it there and see the guy. Yeah, we told him what we wanted in the county meeting, but we don't have an ordinance to ban it. And he agreed, I was here.
He agreed to do it, um, and.
But it is, it's, you see the position, see what you're saying, sir?
I see what, what the.
He says, we're able to manage right here, well, that don't mean nothing to me. Well, and, and, and I can go up there and I can talk to him and explain the city's position on it. But if that, if, that's what I was getting at, if that's the masonry ordinance that you wanna put in, that's still new enough building that he can do it.
Right.
So if you come up with that, and then I got something to go back on, if he decides he's not gonna do it, he don't wanna cooperate, then we'll start, you know, giving fines out, citing him for it.
Well, see, that's something we've been, we've had, we've had that in our council discussions for months.
And I, and I get that Doug, 'cause we, the new dollar store.
And he just came in, and he just came in in the middle of it.
Yeah.
Um, and we've asked other people to do it as well.
Now, I can go up there and talk to him and see, because he's supposed to be putting in two buildings up there. The car lot and the tire shop, and he may be under the impression he just needs to do it on the, on the, on the car lot building. Maybe, maybe not so much on the ten building, 'cause if you look directly across the street, the new dollar store, it doesn't run down that south side of that building.
Anything, I mean, I, I, this ordinance needs to include anything on the highway.
Yeah, and I agree.
And anything in our little downtown area. There's anything that's new and built or remodeled and, and built up.
Yes, sir.
Well, it has to be written.
That, that, when it's written down in the ordinance, it gives me a little bit more power to introduce stuff like that, that's all I was trying to do.
And, and, and that's just one of the things we've been talking about, and one of the things I included in this. And it's this packet of ordinances that have been floating out here for a while that we need to address.
Okay, so, we'll check in with that and try to get it on the next month. And then, uh, the next one, the burnout ordinance, I mean, that's, uh, cleanliness of the property.
Yeah.
That, we already have that in place.
And I, I've already started working on that situation around town already.
Okay.
Um, the, the burnout, or the houses that are rundown and collapsing and stuff like that. When I, when I've tried to make contact with owners, some of the people don't live here, they live in other states. So I've gotten a lot of my replies back, that I've done on code enforcement, to no response, nobody's here. And then they send it back to me, so then, the phone numbers you use, nobody, nobody recognizes the phone numbers, nobody's there. So the information is wrong in the CAD system. And so that's when I go off to get the property owners and the lot numbers off of these, these code enforcement, and if it's wrong in there, and we don't have it updated here, it, it's kinda hard to go after the owner then.
They don't have water.
Right, so then what I gotta do is I gotta go and do the abatements. And that's a long drawn out process for each one to do on that. And then that way, if we do it in, uh, in a basement on it, the city can take over the property, clean it. And if somebody says they own it, they wanna come in and do it, now they're gonna pay the city for it all the time, the labor. But we don't have the manpower in the city department to do that either. And we can do what we did in Calvert, and that's, the officers got out and helped tear down the houses and clean it up. Now, I mean, we don't wanna be problematic, 'cause we did it down there, but it has to go through the abatement process first.
What does the abatement process look like?
A headache.
Yeah.
I, I mean, I'm not trying to be funny, but that's, that's what it is, it's a long.
What is step one?
Step one is, you gotta find out, you gotta make contact, you gotta try to give notice to the owners that you fix the, that your property. And then it goes through a whole civil process in the courts, for the courts to award us the property. That way, we've got legal standings to be there and start cleaning it up.
Starts out really easy, it was a ten day later, and then after that, it goes into like a six month, two year process with the civil court.
Okay.
Yeah. So, and I got a good abatement guy sitting in that next room, he may be gone now, but, I mean, we did, we did some of that over in Martin.
What was the, uh, the typical cost to the city to appreciate that process?
When, when we were, when we were in Calvert, and we did it down there, we went on the, uh, what is it, the west side of the highway six there, went down in there. And we did, I think it was twenty-three, twenty-three houses in there, but we had the National Guard come in and help us. But that process cost us time, cost us equipment, cost us fuel, and then cleanup going to the dump. So it was somewhere around seven to eight thousand dollars per, per property to clean it up. And that's if you don't hit a gas line that's still alive, and that, that's a very well, or a very good possibility that you're gonna do that here in this town.
Sure.
And one of the other issues you gotta worry about is if it's, depending on how old the house is, if it's got.
Yeah.
Built with expenses.
Yep.
That's a whole different ballgame.
Gotcha.
And that's, that's where, you used to see cities would go in and burn houses down that nobody, people passed away, they had no family, or, the house was just abandoned, and they'd go in and do it, and then the natural, or the Clean Air Act came in, and that stopped all of that. And you still got some people to do it, but when they get caught, that's, that's heavy fines for cities.
So for the purposes of an abatement, Christian, you may know this, does the lot have to be vacant? Like, does it have to be without a house, without a structure on it?
Well, no, it, it, you, you're, you're doing the abatement for the house, for cleaning the property.
Oh, okay, 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 got it.
Okay, all right, let's move on, so, next on the agenda, discussing possibly act upon amending the animal ordinance, Doug, what would you like to amend on the animal ordinance?
Well, that's just something, I just, what includes in it, we need to go ahead and get that thing rolling, we're, he's like, he stays with me, it was just part of that package that I, I'm gonna have to handle, that we just need to.
Well, go ahead and get them rounded up.
Here's, here's, here's what we talked about the last time. We have a hard, we have a hard time trying to find someplace to take these animals when we get them, if nobody claims their animals. You, you know, and I talked to Laura's house, and they're poor, they can't take any. Uh, a lot of the areas around here won't take them because we're out of their county, like Hill County. That's where they told me up there, the United Society up there, they can't take them, because we, we're gonna have several dogs, like, we got that package running around town. I don't know what we're gonna do, other than we're gonna have to build a dog pen, and we're gonna have to maintain that. And there, there's positives and there's negatives, and the negatives outweigh the positives on that.
They certainly do, I agree.
I mean, 'cause then you're, you're worried about if that dog bites one of your employees, you know.
Well, we still got, 'cause we still got to do, you know, it, it, we've got a so-called dog ordinance in policy, if you wanna call it that. And if it bites a, and nobody's done anything about this, the dog that's running loose, and it bites somebody, then, then the city could be liable for not taking care of the dog.
Did, and, and that's, that's what I'm saying, I'm looking for a place to put these dogs.
Even though.
That's the reason I haven't, that's the reason I haven't ordered a dart gun yet, because I wasn't gonna do that until I found a place that would take these dogs.
Yeah, nobody will take them anymore.
It, it's, it's getting harder and harder to find.
So, can we dig in more and see how far we would have to drive to find somebody that would take them?
Yeah, I'll, I'll look further out and see if we got any dog rescues or anything that are local, that can take them. Yeah, that's Laura's.
Laura, yeah, yeah.
Laura's place over there, that's who I talked to last week. That was gonna be in my, my monthly report.
Gotcha.
So you're gonna work on that for us?
Yes, sir.
For next meeting, next.
Yes, sir.
Were, were you, Chief, were you representing a pack of five dogs that, somewhere over in here that kinda?
Yes, sir, there's six. And they came, they came from right over here, behind the bank, and one, the father to the dog is, uh, the man that lived down there on the corner by the water tower, has that big Gerbit Shepherd, that hairy Gerbit Shepherd. That's the father to these puppies, and people on either side are feeding these dogs. And now they're going after livestock on the other side, and that's where I explained to that livestock owner, that if they're visibly, if they're physically attacking your goats, your animals, uh, your, your kids, you, or whatever, at that point, use deadly force, but leave that dog late. Let me come take pictures, let me come get it, and we'll, we'll dispose of the dog later. But don't move it, don't dump it on the road, don't take it out the county and dump it off in a ditch. If you get caught, you're gonna go to jail. And, you know, it's kinda like, somebody breaks in your house and you shoot them, and then you pick up the body and you move it. Now, it doesn't look like self-defense, it looks like you committed a murder, and you're trying to hide the fraud or the, the evidence. So, that, that's the problem we're running, and that's, that's the reason the people in town are so agitated right now. Is 'cause we have nowhere to go with these dogs. We have, and the sad part is, it's gonna bite somebody else.
Okay, I have a friend that, um, those dogs, he's not a hold of a cat. And, you know, I, the dog is holding my cat, he's a dead dog, I'm gonna tell you right now.
Yeah.
So.
All right, let's move on, next on the agenda, discussing possibly act upon amending the firearm ordinance, Chief?
Yes, sir, we need to take out of this ordinance any use of firearms on property inside the city limits. We all know why, and we know what we're going through right now. We, we need to take that completely out, now, I'm not saying do anything else, but if you wanna shoot your firearms, go to gun range up here, in Corso County, or go out in the county where you got property and shoot your weapons, not inside the city limits. I don't care whether you got ten acres or fifty inside the city, it needs to be outside of it. Because it, it's gonna happen again, where we have the same problem. And it just, it needs to be solved by taking that out, so like on section two, you go down here to two oh one, and it says, uh, less than fifty acres, or three hundred acres, or, or three hundred feet, uh, of a resident talked about. We have this continuous problem over here on May Street, where he shoots back in those trees, and Assistant Fire Chief lives down there. So eventually, what's gonna happen is a straight bullet's gonna kill somebody. And then you wanna talk about liability, you think what we're going through right now is something? Wait until somebody gets hit with one of them bullets over here.
So you wanna take out section two and section three and leave the exceptions?
Yeah, I wanna take out section two, um, with, uh, two one, the, let's see, two oh four, and then down here at four oh five, where it talks about if you got ten acres or more, you can shoot it. Now, if you got a wild animal, it's coming in your yard, and you can't get a hold of us, or we're not on, then by all means, take that animal out. You know what I mean? Like, if, if you got a coyote coming up, and he's tearing up your dog, or you got a pig, it's just tearing up your house, your car, or whatever, take it out then, we'll take care of that. Don't, don't just be out there just shooting because you think you can do it.
Okay, so that would be, you're talking about section two, all of it?
Yes, sir.
Section three, all of it?
Yes, no, not section, yes, section three. Yes, sir.
And then leave all of section four in?
Uh, even, even down here at four six, where it talks about varmit control.
Four six?
We need to take that one out, because right now, what it states is, you can shoot a shotgun. Well, most shotguns are not gonna shoot that far unless you got slugs in it or double off butt. Okay, and what they're talking about is for bird hunting, back when people used to shoot the doves and quail and everything else used to be around here. It's not talking about target practice, which was, was going on when that, when that incident happened. So, if we take that out.
Four six?
Yeah, four six.
Four point six.
Yes, sir. All of, all of three, and then all of two. And if we, if we wanna go back and reword it to a different thing, but take out the acreage and take out the shooting in the city limits. Basically, that's what it needs to say, don't shoot in the city limits.
I agree.
And make it simple, what you got?
So, I mean, just.
I see you working on it.
Just based off of our definitions, birds were nowhere included in it, varmints, common to Dawson, or skunks, squirrels, and raccoons. Buddy, I hate squirrels. I didn't, 'cause I was a homeowner, and, uh, I thought, I thought.
My house too.
One of the most hilarious things that I moved here was reading through this very ordinance and being like, oh man, if I get a squirrel, the only way I can legally dispose of it, is with a shotgun.
And if you, if you look at it, it doesn't say you can't use a rifle. Uh, you can't use, uh, a pistol.
Only a shotgun is used.
Yeah.
And only size six or smaller shot is used.
Yeah, which is birdshot.
So, so if I were to use a twenty-two short, that is illegal.
Yeah, that's a rimfire.
Yeah, right, so.
Pillow rifle.
Yeah. Uh, I, uh, so I agree, four point six needs to be reworded, but I, I don't think that it should be taken. I don't, I don't think it should be taken out altogether, I think the dealing, dealing of burdens is a very reasonable thing for homeowners to do.
The, the, the problem is, Matt, is not everybody's careful that you start shooting rounds.
Yeah.
So you wanna take out the shooting in the city limits, totally, we've had two incidents.
Yeah.
And one of them is serious right now.
Yeah.
And what's gonna wind up happening, which very per, easily could have happened the first time, was that bullet could have killed somebody up there.
Absolutely.
There were kids out when that happened.
That was bad.
And then the second one, he could have killed somebody, he didn't know if anybody was in the house. He could have killed somebody shooting in that house.
Yeah.
And that's the problem, when, when you get it, when you put it in there, you can shoot inside the city limits, people aren't gonna think about what's behind that bullet. That's like I'm accounting for every round that comes out of my pistol, and if I have one that ricochets, or if I have one that goes through somebody and hits somebody behind, I'm liable for that.
Yeah.
That's me. That's what we need to take, no shooting in the city limits.
So, the liability falls on the, on the person who discharges the firearm, so.
But you got that city ordinance, you got that city ordinance, comes back on the city.
Section five says, nothing in this ordinance shall be construed as an assumption of liability by the city.
Where are we at right now? Is the city not involved in this?
I, I think it's, the issue that we have right now, both instances, both instances were outside of the ordinance that we already have. They were shooting towards inhabited buildings.
But they were shooting inside the city limits, both incidents were in the city limits.
With city.
Yeah, I think my point is, there's a way to do it responsibly, and I don't wanna throw, throw it out, throw the big apple in the mouthwater.
When, when y'all, I don't know if you were here when I interviewed, and when y'all first hired me. But my responsibility is to protect this city first. Protecting people, protect the city, and make sure everybody's safe. I can't do my job if I got people out here shooting rounds in the city. I don't care whether it's a shotgun, I don't care whether it's a rifle, I don't care whether it's a pistol. I care about the people here, that's my job.
Yep.
And then I care about what happens to the city, because that's also my job, and then it puts everyone of you in liability too. And that's what I'm trying to stop, we, we already got this one incident, we don't need another.
Uh, yeah, no.
And that's the reason I'm saying, just take it out, no shooting firearms in the city limits, period, if you do.
You've contradicted yourself, you said if an animal is getting harmed, a child or whatever, it's okay for them to shoot it. But if you put that ordinance in, will they not be getting ticketed for that exact thing?
No, the state said it, okay, stop trying to catch me on my.
I'm not trying to, I'm just trying. I'm not trying to, I'm just trying to find out.
And this is the deal. The state says you have a right to protect your place, your property, your family, your livestock. At that point, if something's in danger that you own or threatened to be destroyed, you can do this. At that point, we come over there and we go, okay, we see it.
Section four addresses that.
Nobody, nobody gets in trouble for that. It's when you're out here and you're just shooting rounds at stuff and you have no business doing it. That's, that's what I was getting at. So I didn't contradict myself. I just didn't state the state law.
Okay. But I'm just thinking, if you put no firearms in the city, then.
No, no, no. No, that's your second amendment. I would never, never.
Okay, all right, let's get back with, with what we're doing here. So, you're not, you're not liking the taking four point six out?
No, I, 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 I think reword it, fine, but.
All right, let's reword it. What do you want to say?
Um.
Let's move through this.
I'd say an allowance for a rimfire should be acceptable in the dispatching departments.
Not a rimfire.
Why?
Because it, a rimfire will carry your connections of a mile.
A twenty-two short?
A twenty-two short.
A twenty-two, brother.
I mean.
A twenty-two short would kill a cow. That's what a kill house uses, a twenty-two short.
Okay, so, I think.
I, I, I think.
Twenty-two is more dangerous for apple.
For now, I would like to do what the chief suggests, and if there is some language that we can come up with to redo a four point six, I'm all for it. If it suits.
Yeah.
Yeah, we can, we can, let's move, take that and move it on.
So, with, with that in mind.
I see where you're coming from, but, but twenty-two is not a, not a, not an option.
And all seventeen-inch alarm.
That's what going on.
So, with that in mind, I move to remove section two, section three, and rewrite four point six from section four.
Can rewrite, can rewrite for next month, who want to put on the agenda to add something back to that?
Just fine. Let me amend that. I move to remove section two, section three, and four point six from section four with the, uh, the, to rewrite.
I see. Paul's favor.
Name.
Paul's favor, Mr. Perry. Next on the agenda, discussing possibly act upon amending the speeding ordinance, Chief?
Yes, sir. Right now, the way the speeding ordinance reads, we have a bill of, of a fine not to exceed two hundred dollars. The city is losing the money. If we ever decide, and I think that's the way we're moving, the way the county is moving, is everybody's going the same direction the JPs are. So JPs have a fine list, and everybody's trying to get on board, so if we arrest somebody, the fines are same all the way across the board. The JPs can go in and go, well, this is what we charge, this is what it is, we're going that way. So right now, we got, uh, uh, two hundred dollars maximum. We just need to take it out. And just, then we can adjust the fine rates on the speeding, the traffic, the open containers and all of that. And we get, we can actually get more of that money here in the city. So that, that would help us out.
What do you remember municipalities have as like their cap?
Well, and that's, that's the thing, we got some stuff from the JP's office, and everybody, I don't have one with me, um, as far as the, the increases, but it's gonna go up. The fines are going up all over the county. So, and it's just following suit with the JPs, because the JPs are the ones that reign everybody. And if you're going the same way the JPs are, and you keeping all your cities in there the same, then everybody's fines are the same, nobody's, you can't go over here and it's a thousand dollars for it, and you go over here and it's three hundred eighty, you know? So. In fact, I'll get you one of those in habit for you, so you can see what the, the rates are on that.
Can I bring that too?
No.
Okay. You gonna bring that to the next meeting, Chief?
Yes, sir.
Okay, awesome. All right, next on the agenda, discussing possibly act upon amending the curfew ordinance, Chief?
The state took out the curfew, uh, law, uh, it's been about three, four years ago. And it's basically you can even put a, a curfew on anybody now for this unless we go into a, a, uh, uh, we call it a lockdown period that the government sets in. So, yeah, martial law. Uh, so right now, since the state has taken that completely out, it said, nobody will have a curfew law. We just need to do away with that. No use even having it in here, no use of having it on these, uh, side, or these, uh, filings that we're having now. So that's a, that's an ordinance that needs to go away.
Agreed. Free help, then. We don't have a choice.
I move to, uh, remove the curfew, boy.
Second. Paul's favor.
I, I know.
Paul's favor, Mr. Perry. Next on the agenda, discussing possibly act upon approving to get a phone line in the police department office for a fax line, Chief?
Yes, sir. We, we, uh, we receive CPS letters all the time to come up here to fax, and those are supposed to be secured, nobody's supposed to be able to see those, but the people in the P E. And a lot of it is for protection for the children, and, or whatever victim it may be. So we, we do need a landline in there. I've got the capability to receive and send faxes from my office on the, there, uh, on the desk, and all the officers can use it in there. But we need to have those CPS complaints or investigations sent to us and not up front where everybody can see them. So that's the reason for the landline, because I haven't been getting them, and they've been sending them. So we just found out that the fax machine's broken, it's fixed now, it is. So that's probably the reason why we had to get them. So I've been getting calls from, uh, the advocacy center about, um, you got this case out here, didn't know anything about it, CPS is calling us, saying, hey, we've sent you this, and you're not doing anything with it. Had to get it. And I know we were getting them for a while, because Rhonda was shredding them. And I, I, I seen it one day, I was like, what are you doing? You can't shred it. So, after that, I didn't get any more, so I don't know if it was coming in, it would be a dumb one, I wouldn't hear it, but, um, I need a landline in all of this.
Free help, then. Yeah.
That's fine, yeah.
I'll get you one. It'll be on the next one. The next meeting.
Table. Uh, you gonna bring us a quote?
Yes, sir.
I'm gonna move eighteen down to the bottom, so everybody doesn't have to leave and come back. Uh, next on the agenda, police department report?
Uh, we're getting back up on our feet, and we're finally, finally starting to move, some citations back in town, we're being seen in public again. Uh, we got Paul back. Uh, hopefully tonight, we'll have, we'll have earnest, uh, once we put us another one back out here on the street, uh, till we find out what we're gonna do with it. I started coker. Um, vehicles are running good. I still haven't done anything with the charger yet. Uh, I've gotta get cameras installed, I do the cameras, and I've gotta order two, uh, well, I gotta order one laptop, and I've gotta try to find a battery for another one. But we're down to one vehicle and one laptop, so. But, uh, everything else is looking good. Varmint's running better. We caught up on all of our state, uh, paperwork, and everything that was outstanding, we're back up there far now. That's about it.
Anybody have a question, Chief?
How did the Paul's tuition go with the, uh?
It went really good. Uh, they, they were wondering how the city felt about us interacting with them and having an officer at the ISD. And I, I, I told them, which y'all told me, y'all, y'all liked the idea, uh, that we were gonna supply a lot of the stuff. Uh, I gave them an M O U that I had from a buddy of mine in Bruce Letty. Uh, they looked at it, and they've got several more, and they're just, right now, uh, I guess they're excited whether they're gonna do their own police department or if they're gonna take Paul's with him over there. So, we hadn't heard anything back on it, but yeah, they were real receptive to it, and we're all.
Anybody else? All right, thank you, Chief. Next on the agenda, water and sewer report, Chris?
We're good.
Table?
Hey, gee. No, we got a lot of water and sewer taps we gotta do this month. We're still working on higher drain. Trying to get potholes, been very, very busy.
You're gonna dig a T-shirt out of an August?
Yep.
That sucks.
It does work, though. I'm gonna come out today.
How many taps do you have coming up in the morning?
Uh, we just completed a sewer tap on the property, they paid a dollar, so we got a tap there, two taps are there. Two taps, five though.
And you're busy?
I'm busy.
You guys have any questions, Chris?
One other thing, uh, they'll be out here at eight o'clock in the morning, great, thirty. To install one of the blessing boxes. So, my staff's gonna be over there to help them dig the hole, get it all set up, but one of them, they're still working on the, uh.
Okay. Thank you, Chris. Next on the agenda, municipal court collections. Total was five thousand five hundred sixty dollars ninety-seven cents. The city received three thousand four hundred thirty-five dollars and sixty-six cents. We sent the state two thousand one hundred twenty-five dollars and thirty-one cents. Next on the agenda, discussing possibly act upon approving minutes for October fourteen, twenty twenty-five regular meeting?
Move to approve. Next for October fourteen, twenty twenty-five regular meeting.
Sir. Paul's favor.
I know.
Paul's favor, Mr. Perry. Next on the agenda, discussing possibly act upon approving minutes for October twenty-third, twenty twenty-five special call meetings?
Move to approve the minutes for the special call meeting.
Paul's favor.
I know.
Paul's favor, Mr. Perry. Okay, next on the agenda, discussing possibly act upon approving October twenty twenty-five general fund financial report. Um, the bank switched over from Citizens Bank to Cadence Bank, and QuickBooks went Haywire. They don't charge us, each bank charges us, and we're gonna have to push, why it looks so ugly, we're gonna push, uh, the financial report table it to next month, when everything's straightened out. I'm just gonna be working on that to get it straight. Uh, next on the agenda, discussing possibly act upon approving October twenty twenty-five water sewer financial report. Same thing on that, we're waiting to get that straightened out. Next on the agenda, discussing possibly act upon paying the bills today. Think we got the bills won. Everything. No, the bills are the same one.
We have the bills, Bill.
The bills are the same.
Bill.
Art for. Give the bill.
Unless you want to have it, two o'clock.
We know, we know. Free help, thank you.
We'll be able to pay bills.
Thanks, Mills.
Let's take this. Thank you. Paul's favor.
Uh.
Paul's favor, Mr. Perry. All right, next on the agenda, comments from citizens. Anybody have comments?
I got a question. So the, the lot across the street from my house, the zilma involved, they started putting the stakes up and all of that, the tree has fallen. No one's been there the whole, I can, I'll go around the tree, but can we find out where he's at about trying to come take this thing off?
You know, we're telling.
Yeah, that's the same one to put in to make sure. Yeah, right next to that. Yeah.
That's at least the tree was.
Find out who it is and get the tree moved?
At least, I mean, I'll go at our property, but right now, there's a tree down, and the rest of it's dead, and it's, it's.
This good tree went down in the storm, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, I remember that one.
We'll, we'll come and get it.
All right. Anybody else? All right, comments from council? Anybody anything?
I'm calming down.
Okay. Uh, all right. The council's gonna go into executive session to discuss, uh, employees employment. Uh, we're going to the executive session at seven oh eight.